Good evening, everyone. We're in the morning of January 20th. We have our city council meeting tonight. I'm your dear Aiden. We are going to have an opening pledge of allegiance by Councilmember.
Okay, would you all rise and say the pledge of allegiance with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hark! Your Father in Heaven, we are so very grateful this night to meet here in the city of Harrisville. We're thankful for the opportunity to live and work here. We're especially thankful for all those who are employed in our great city. And please bless them and their families always to be taken care of and watched over. Bless our great citizens also that they will be, always know that they are on our minds and in our hearts and that we're here to serve them and do the best we can for them. Bless thy spirit to be with us this night in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Councilmember. Move on to our number, item number three, our consent items. This is to approve the meeting minutes for October 10th, 2023. If you have a chance to read those or you have any changes or may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for October 10th, 2023.
Second.
All right, a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, every once in a while, we have an opportunity to have some of the toy recognition, and this is one of those nights I'm pretty excited about it. We're going to turn the time over to Chief Wilson.
So the first one we're going to do is replay recognition for the Walmart robbery. I'll give you a little background on the case. Recognition for outstanding service to the citizens of Harrisville and the surrounding community often goes unnoticed as we often simply expect our officers to do their jobs. We recognize that the mere fact that our officers do their job places them in danger and requires them to step up to prevent that danger from repeating itself. On September 28th, 2023, at approximately 11:30, the Harrisville Police Department had officers respond to an armed robbery that occurred at Walmart. Officers Duffy, Millaway, Paradise, Detective Keller, and Assistant Chief Moore responded along with officers from North Ogden and Pleasant View. Quickly secured the scene, they gathered information, sent out in an attempt to locate and scour the area in an attempt to locate the suspect. The robbery occurred on the east side of the store in the Garden Center where the suspect confronted a young female clerk, 18 years old, and demanded for her to open the register. He lifted his shirt, exposing a handgun. The clerk was terrified and struggled to get the register to open. When the suspect said, "Don't make me pull it out", the clerk had him pick up an item from the return card so she could create a transaction which opened the register. The suspect put the cash in the shopping bag next to the store, riding a motorcycle. Upon review of the video footage and sharing the info with other agencies, it was determined that the suspect in our robbery was also a person of interest in a robbery that occurred on September 27th in North Ogden at the Northern Ice. The investigation continued, and another robbery occurred at the smoke shop on Third Street, Ogden, on September 30th, with the suspect using a similar method to complete the robbery. With the suspect apparently targeting random businesses and displaying handgun in his waistband, our officers never let up their dive or stopped their search for the suspect. Thanks to the direct results and actions by the Harrisville officers, the suspect was identified as Zachary Parkinson out of Ogden and was ultimately arrested in a joint effort between Harrisville, North Ogden, and Ogden to kickle. It is because of the outstanding efforts by our own officers that the community does not have to fear for a repeat offense from Mr. Parkinson. Today, we present a unit citation for outstanding performance to the officers and employees of the Harrisville Police Department. We recognize that all officers worked to keep our city safe while the suspect remained in large, and specifically Officer Nicholas Francis and Detective Jason Keller were key in identification and arrest of the suspect. Officer Francis continued his search to identify the suspect, and on the morning of October 1st, he spoke with a clerk and a customer at the Common Sense. He provided compared pictures and asked questions which led to a possible suspect. He then contacted Master Officer Millaway and apprised him of his findings, and then Detectives Keller and Holmes, Holmes of North Ogden. Between the still shots from the surveillance footage and information gathered, Officer Francis identified the suspect as a local individual with a street name of Vero and ultimately linked that to Zachary Parkinson. Detective Keller continued to work with North Ogden and Ogden detectives, and on the evening of October 1st, they were able to confirm that Zachary Parkinson was the individual who completed the three robberies and determined that his current location was in an apartment near 700 North Washington Boulevard. Detectives were able to obtain warrants and successfully arrest Zachary Parkinson without incident. Master Officer Millaway and Sergeant Davis responded to assist with the service of the warrants and entry into the garage of the apartment complex. Detective Keller obtained an additional warrant and seized key items of evidence, including the clothing that the suspect had worn at the Walmart robbery. So, in the end, the suspect was arrested before a week had lapsed on the robbery. So, good work to these guys getting this guy off the street. So I guess what I'd like to do is have all the council come up and the mayor, and we'll hand out the certificates. So these will come with a citation for your uniform. They were not ready and could be delivered for tonight, so keep with those as they come. So Officer Nick Francis.
Congratulations, sir.
Detective Keller. Officer Clint Carter. Oh, did he go? Sergeant Alicia Davis. Officer Duffy. Master Officer John Millaway. Assistant Chief Dennis Moore. Officer Chris Paradise. Sergeant Nick Taylor. Officer Tyler Vincent. Swear there, we've got some stuck. Master Officer Corey Clark. Jackie Van Medren. And Jack Fogel. You can pretend to have one of these, I like it. I made a mistake. So I have a couple of other things. So this month is Assistant Chief Moore's 15th year with us, so I want to present him with this leather one. Sorry, I got my hands full, if you want to take it out. But congratulations on 15 years, and we hope to get a few more out of you. Officer Chris Paradise. Chris has finished his probation and he's getting his badge with his name on it. Justin. Okay, these next awards or certificates are individuals that have completed their drone pilot class, so they're certified drone pilots.
I'd like to have Jake Booth here, come on.
Jack Fogel, I got you one for this one. You want to do it for me?
Yeah, this is a very special one, Chief Mike Wilson.
Apparently I'm getting my own, isn't it? That's for their uniforms. I'm going to get this right this time, Sergeant John Millaway. How was your master officer last night?
Well, I'm still a master officer, I haven't put my sergeant stripes on yet.
And Officer Clint Carter. Oh, which is not here. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Wilson, we like to see things like this in our community, and we appreciate all the hard work that goes into this behind the scenes. We don't always get, get the full view of what you do, and we appreciate everything. Can't make you enough. Item number five, first on the business items is Harrisville City Council Act update. Adam? Zachary? Aiden? Oh, sorry, I read that wrong, I don't have my class, is that you?
Yeah.
Would you like to come up and approach her?
Okay, so recap, we had the Fall Festival just a couple of weeks ago. I had a lot of fun, I'm sure, if any of you guys went, you had a lot of fun. We did a lot of stuff, we had the pumpkin contest, but the 5K run around the park. I just really enjoyed a lot of it. I was mostly at the stand, giving out like candy and glow sticks to little kids that came around, and I was glad to see that they were all happy and a little bit, they enjoyed like being there. It was just really a nice feeling to have. Yeah, and as a result of us being there, we were also able to get seven new members to the Harrisville U.C. Council, so that's a big, that's a big improvement from how many we had originally, and hopefully we get more and get to do more things as the time goes on.
Thank you. Becca, you're here to report too?
Yes.
Okay, one up.
So I'm here to report on our first annual retreat that took place on the morning of October 21st. We started it off with some food, because everybody loves food. We want to have an event, food is critical. We discussed experiences that we've had so far, including, it's just like on the whole of all the adventures we've embarked so far, so far, so far, I know how to talk. There were a lot of new people that a lot of us weren't familiar with or accustomed to, so we played a get-to-know-you game to get to know one another. Then we had a guest speaker, Johnny Ferry, who helped organize Weaver Members 9/11 Event and worked with the Major Brent Taylor Foundation. He discussed that there are no shortcuts in life and taught effective communication skills through a four-step process that he likes to call the Eye of the Tiger. He was a very energetic storyteller and taught us to be proud of our heritage and where we come from. After that, one of my peers led a team-building game that helped us to build a sense of unity within each other and get to know each other more. Lastly, Elizabeth Hanson discussed our next steps. We have a lot of fun things to look forward to, and we're excited to keep going forward in the Harrisville U.C. Council, thank you.
Thank you. We're proud of our U.C. Council, thanks Elizabeth for all your hard work with that. Okay, moving on to item B, public hearing. This is to receive input or or against Harrisville Ordinance 546 amending transportation impact fees. Before we go into this, Jenny, would you like to perform us what it is?
Sure, thanks, thanks Mayor, good evening, Council. Ordinance 546 amends the transportation impact fees. This is a kind of piggybacks off of the transportation facilities plan that we adopted last month. We've now had the analysis completed by Science Bank that identifies the portion of the projects that we've adopted in our transportation master plan that are eligible for impact fees, and then it identifies a cost per trip associated with the impact and the transportation, this ordinance adopts the actual transportation cost per trip. There was a table that we'll go into a little bit longer, or excuse me, in a moment, we'll go through that table when we get to that business item that shows you what the impact fee will be, and this is the time to take the public comments from the public on this ordinance.
Thank you. So with that, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion, we open the public hearing. Second.
Motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any of us? Okay, motion carries. If anyone has anything to, coming for the council, announce your opportunity, I could come up on the podium, you have three minutes to address this item. And item C, any movement on this, so a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all in favor, move out. Item C, discussion possible action to Harrisville Ordinance 548, which is amending the master development agreement for Dixon Creek mixed-use development located approximately 1300 North Washington Boulevard.
Thanks, Mayor. So this ordinance is based on an application that was received from D.R. Horton for an amendment to the Dixon Creek MDA. The requested amendments are included in the analysis of the Stafford Report. It consolidates the phasing plan into two phases rather than a total of, I believe there were five in the residential, six including the commercial. They have buffered the existing homes from the new development by adding a retention basin closer to the existing homes on 1300 North. They have reduced the, well, they've added a parking amenity, the parking for each unit. The first site plan that we adopted had a lot of concern on the southwest area of the development. There were not a lot of parking stalls and certainly not very close to some of the units on the west side. This amendment includes driveways and garages for all units and will increase the parking, and there's also parking at the amenities throughout the development. They are proposing a seven-unit building. Ultimately, the units will decrease, the overall units will decrease by about 19 units from what is allowed in the MDA to a total of 196 units, which is almost four, five plexes that they've removed from the development. To give you kind of a visual on that, the larger, taller units are placed to screen the development from the main road, which is 1300 North Washington Boulevard, and there's some of the taller units on the west side as well. Exhibit E2 identifies the architectural elevations and styles which are consistent with D.R. Horton. And the maximum height of the buildings is within our residential code, which is 35 feet. The landscape plan is being updated to D.R. Horton's typical landscaping plan, and they did include some proposed open space amenities that were included in their letter as well. So staff is recommending adoption of the proposed update to the MDA, and the applicant is here if you have additional questions.
Council, have any questions, any discussion?
I have, I have a couple.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay, one of the concerns I have is this, you know, I live in the subdivision on the west of that, even though it's not directly in back on 1400. One of the concerns I have is now we are going to hire. I understand the reason for the consolidation, and I understand that. But at the same time, I know that the residents that are on the other side of the field are going to have to like, there are people now down looking into my home and into my backyard. Is there any way that some type of shrubbery or trees or something like that that could grow up and could mask that a little bit? I think the great thing that's going on right now is the distance that we're putting of that, of that green area, that's great. But at the same time, I'm not so much worried about blocking the view of the mountains, but I am concerned as far as that looking like a wall coming out of my backyard. And I think greenery, or not greenery, but at least maybe trees or something along that backyard could help block that. It's just a suggestion, I don't see it in this type of master plan, but it's an idea I thought of that I think would help that as far as, as far as the neighbors to the west and in our subdivision, plus that.
So it is true that the buildings have been rotated. There were three-story buildings included in the original site plan. They were pushed to the east side, and now a few of those units are on the west. There is a natural buffer there on the, if you, if you walk the property, there's already an existing city-owned retention basin that buffers the majority of the homes on that south end. There's also existing foliage in that space that won't be touched or it won't be removed during the construction process. They, they did relocate the retention basin to that corner. So to give you an idea of the depth of that, that's 100 feet. So if, if a development were to come in and request to develop under the RE15, which was the old code, they could have built a home there at the 35 feet.
True.
So this is trying to buffer it as much as possible to the existing homes.
Yeah, like I say, I don't have any problem with what's going on, but if we look out at my backyard, and I'm looking over on the 1500 west, or 1500 north, and seeing the, the units that are up there, all we see is this blue, white, you know, not white brick, but white wall, and there's nothing that detains that. I'm just saying that there could be some trees or something like that taller that would help take that away a little bit. And, you know, and it would just be, it's not a masking, but it is to break up that whole scenery.
And their landscaping plan does just draw to council's attention. It does show trees and shrubs on the exterior of the, as part of the adoption of Exhibit E2. There are trees and shrubs included in their landscaping plan that would, I assume, go on the exterior of the, Chriselle, if you would like. This is Chriselle Travis from D.R. Horton.
Good evening, I get your concern. We're more than happy to look at things, we have proposed trees. Don't know that we could get anything to grow as quickly as you're wanting for us.
No, I'm not expecting that, I want you to know that.
For the privacy, trees take a long time, but we can look at something more columnar and, and that would grow to a height. There isn't a lot of space along that western edge, and like Jenny mentioned, there is that buffer space of the natural drainage and retention that goes through there. But we're open to look at things and appreciate your suggestions.
That's all it is, is a suggestion. I think with what I see, where the existing challenges that you've had, I think you've got a marvelous shot.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I also know that, you know, just an example, I built a pole barn in my backyard. I was concerned about my neighbors, all of a sudden couldn't see the view of Ben Loma. Well, after they sit on the back deck, they get Ben Loma just fine, they just don't see Pleasant View anymore. They're not happy about that, so. And that's all, it was just a thought.
Yep, no, I appreciate that, and we'll take it into consideration.
You said you had a couple, is that just the?
My couple is just a general.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions, any discussions? Thank you.
I guess the other was concern of the traffic, but I don't think there's anything I can do about that.
Is there, I'll watch, sorry. I was just going to add, the traffic, the increased traffic to?
That will come in off of 1300.
The connection there.
Yeah, I'm always concerned about that. And the main concern I have, it resonates into the city, is this is a subdivision full of kids. And now we're increasing the traffic into that area, and it may take more patrol, I don't know. But to keep speeds down, I know there will be complaints and concern from concerned parents about their children. And that's, that's just, I wanted to note that on this, the concern hasn't got anything to do with the development, but it does have, I think, does impact the city.
Okay. Thank you. Is there some discussion, or someone like to make a motion?
I'll motion in the, excuse me, that we accept Ordinance 548 amending the master development agreement for Dixon Creek mixed-use development located at approximately 1300 North Washington Boulevard. Second.
I have a motion in the second, I need a roll call on this, please. Councilmember Lomond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Willmerson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Item D, this is a discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville Resolution 23-17, which is a resolution adopting the transportation impact fee analysis. Jenny, I?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and pull up the impact fee. So the analysis of the, as was mentioned earlier, we had Science Bank do our impact fee analysis for our transportation plan. And as part of that analysis, they identified, they used our master transportation plan to identify which portion of, in the facilities plan, the portion of the projects that we identified were given a ranking as to how much of that would be eligible for impact fees. And during the review process of the analysis, they created a table of, we opted to do generalized categories for the impact fee. So they were broken out into these categories, which are standard categories for identifying what the project or the development might be included. So for example, a single-family detached home, the impact fee is $2,453.14. So these are broken out based on the cost per trip that was identified in the analysis, and then that's what based the, the impact fee for what type of development is going in. So this is the second step to updating our impact fees, and then the ordinance, which I believe is next on the agenda, is actually adopts.
which I believe is next on the agenda, is actually adopts the, the new increased fee for development.
This is all for development, nothing for existing homes?
Yes. Just as a review, as we went through the impact fee facilities analysis last month, if you remember, our consultant was explaining that we actually have to remove from that a portion of even our new projects that our current residents will be using on that transportation. So that's been removed, and then, yes, the impact fee is only charged at the building permit time is when we charge the impact fees, and it's only charged on new development. This doesn't affect existing residents, and we also can't expend any impact fees on existing road structures or expansion if they are not identified in that facilities plan.
Thank you. Good reminder. Any discussion, questions? Any more? All right. Any other motion?
I'll make a motion to action to adopt Harrisville Resolution twenty-three seventeen, resolution adopting transportation impact fee analysis. Second.
I have a motion and a second. This is also a roll call. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilmerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item E, this is a discussion, possible action to adopt Harrisville Ordinance five forty-six, which is amending the transportation impact fees. Jenny Knight, sorry. Sorry, it's a little repetitive, but this is the actual ordinance adopting the fee and putting it into our code. Any questions? All right. And were you ready to have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We adopt Harrisville Ordinance four or five forty-six, amending transportation impact fees. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Also, roll call. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilmerson?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes also. Item F, discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville Ordinance five forty-four, which is repealing and reenacting Title twelve Harrisville City Code entitled Subdivision Regulations. Jenny Knight?
Thank you, Mayor. So we have a lot on our agenda tonight. This one we're gonna spend a little, a little bit of time on. During the 2013 legislative session, the legislators adopted regulations for cities to update our subdivision review process, and we had a deadline of February of 2024 to update our ordinance. This change is quite significant to our current code. Our current code, just a quick review, is if a developer comes in for a subdivision currently, they attend our project management meeting, they, once their application is complete, it moves forward to Planning Commission for preliminary approval, and then onto City Council for preliminary approval. Then it goes back to Planning Commission for a final review, and City Council for final review. So this is streamlining that that was previously all administrative. It wasn't a legislative action, and so the legislators said that that can go to staff, and staff can be the ones making sure that those code sections are met during the reviews, and that our standards are met during, with the proposed developments. So the, the items that are identified as most significant in the new subdivision regulations, it looks quite a lot different than our current code, as was mentioned, but what we opted to do is the, the definition sections in this ordinance are specific to this title, so there aren't a lot of other additional land use terms in the, the regulations. It's simply the subdivision definitions in this code, so that was updated. The administrative land use authority is created, and that is what will do the review of the applications, the proposed applications. The land use authority is outlined in the code as to who will sit on that. It will be myself, a planner, the Public Works Director, the city engineer, the, the parties from the city staff that are involved in development will sit on that land use authority. The new legislation requires that a review cycle can only maximize at four reviews. So the initial review is a PLAT review, and that will actually go to Planning Commission, and that will complete the first review. And then there are three remaining cycles for continued reviews for the development. So there was actually a cap put on the review cycles by the legislators. They didn't, we also have timelines that the city has to respond during those review cycles once a complete application has been received. A complete application must be received to initiate one of those review cycles. So if the city engineer has a number of comments on a review, and the developer hasn't addressed all of those comments, they will not move on to the next review cycle. It'll just keep getting kicked back until all of the engineer's comments, which has been, it'll be interesting to see that, that happen. Subdivisions of thirty lots or more are now required to be phased developments. So previously, we did not have a, a cap on the number of lots in a single phase, and now we've identified that thirty is enough for, for a single phase. New deadlines are outlined, as was mentioned. Most of them are about fifteen days for a review cycle by the city staff. The submission requirements have been updated. It's been a number of years since we've gone to digital submissions, and our code still talked about paper copies, so we've updated that. The development activity prior to the PLAT recording has also been updated to meet our new, our practice. We've been practicing this for some time, where we allow installation of infrastructure prior to the record, recording of the PLAT. What that means is we will allow a developer to go out, put all the infrastructure in to the roads, to the sidewalks, curb gutter, all the utilities. When they get ready to record, they then have to set up escrow for the remaining improvements, and part of that is the contingency that's required if there were some type of an error or an issue with an installed improvement that we, we maintain that at the time of recording. So they are not allowed to sell, under state law, they cannot sell the property unless it's the full unit. At, as a lot, they couldn't sell until they've recorded. So we allow them to do a lot of that infrastructure work prior to recording. It, it helps them not have to put quite so much escrow up at the time, but before they're able to sell that, they do have to put the escrow in place. We, we kind of discussed this, and it's actually highlighted in there. The, the Planning Commission opted to suggest a fee in lieu of improvements rather than deferral agreements. This is a very rare circumstances, circumstance in subdivisions, but for example, if, I'll just use my, my old home on North Harrisville Road as an example. When we built our home there, there's no curb gutter or sidewalk in place. A deferral agreement is a typical mechanism put into place that if the city were to go in and put curb gutter and sidewalk in at a later date, the property owner would be responsible to pay for that infrastructure. Oftentimes, the property owners, the, the home sell, there's a new owner. The deferral agreement might be in place for quite a few years, and the new owner has no idea. We, we had that happen a little bit on Larson Lane. Fortunately, we were able to acquire the funding that we needed to put the improvements in, so it didn't necessarily cost the city any money. But deferral agreements have been a little tricky in my experience. So we talked about it as a committee. We came up with an option called Fee in lieu of. So a developer on a small development would be allowed to put up a, a fee rather than put, install those improvements. Of course, the fee wouldn't be the same cost of those improvements, or else they may as well just put the curb gutter and sidewalk in at that time. So the Planning Commission recommended the Fee in lieu of rather than deferral agreements, but it's included, it's both of those options, so you could read through them, and you're the ultimate. You decide which one you'd rather have in, in the ordinance, and we'll follow that. Another item that we've included is flag lots. Flag lots have not historically been allowed in Harrisville. A flag lot is a circumstance where a driveway is maybe the width thirty feet, and it goes back to a lot that meets the frontage behind an existing lot on the road. The flag being the large portion where the house is built, and the pole being the driveway that connects to the road. We historically have not included those as an option in Harrisville. That it has only been a suggestion to consider to help us meet our moderate income housing requirements, to allow for more housing options in the city, but it's ultimately up to you whether you want that section included in the code. And I'd like the section there if you want to have discussion about that. And we've also identified exemptions for agricultural purposes. We do have some A-one zone left in Harrisville, and it's not necessarily been outlined what those clauses are, and so that's been outlined in the subdivision regulations as well. So that's a really kind of high-flying overview of the regulations, but pinpointing those major changes that are now included in the ordinance.
That's a lot. Any questions or discussion?
Personally, I don't like flag lots. I would love to see that taken off.
I'm not a big flag lot fan myself, though my hometown of Kanab, there's so many lots with barns and broken-down corrals and infrastructures that look way far back that actually made sense. I think we're comparing apples and oranges there.
Yeah, it's up to this body's discussion on whether you want to leave that or take it out. We'll just follow what you adopt.
This is all for subdivisions I'm talking about.
Yes.
There's no reason for a flag lot in a subdivision. No, no. Because there's always a road behind it, in Miami. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we could certainly, you guys can decide on flag lots. Jenny says things much nicer than I do sometimes. Quite frankly, the reason that we're adding the flag lots and talking about the moderate income housing report is this is going to come one way or another, whether it's from the state or this body. If you want the state to be the ones to do it, that's fine. Quite frankly, the state and the legislators are looking for any reason and ability for people to put different types of housing on ground that's existing. So understand you don't like it. It doesn't matter to me one way or another, but this is something that the state is watching what cities do on items like this, on creative ways to allow people to put housing where there hasn't been housing before. That is why Jenny added it. And again, you don't have to like it. We can wait till the state says we have to do it. That's totally fine. But that's coming, just so everyone's crystal clear as we discuss this. So food for thought.
So I know there's discussions, and I'm out with some of my neighbors saying, I have this deep lot. My children can't afford a house. What about a mini house or a tiny house? And that drops into the flag lot, as far as I'm concerned. You know, they're looking at ways that they can help children in other places that they can actually build and use in their land usage. I know that's happening in other cities already. So we're not, we're not the first on this poor case. And I say we stay ahead of the state.
There's a lot, this moderate income housing report that we are required to do. You know, we, we had that, I think our first was back in March that was due, and then we didn't really have enough time to even implement that. It was August again. As far as, I don't know if you knew, the county had been having a, a subcommittee for housing, and we're looking at all the ways of what, how are we gonna put in about seventy thousand people in the next few years coming here, and what are we gonna do, and how can we be creative? This is coming down from the legislature. We are, we are encouraged to be as creative as we can, and I, I understand you don't like the flag lots. I understand that. There's a lot of things that we don't like that is coming down. Yeah. There's just a lot of pressure to put people.
Having met our moderate income housing, we sent that in. We were approved.
So we received a letter of compliance for making progress on our strategies. So we have to show, it's, it's good until next August first of 2024, when we have to show and identify that we've made additional progress on our strategies. So certainly adopting something that allows a, a new development option helps us meet that strategy faster. If you were to opt to remove it, then we would have to come up with some other way to meet that strategy before next year's report is due. If it's helpful, we can review, we, as our committee, went through a, a few different options, but we can review what we've included in the flag lots. It's not a free-for-all. There are some requirements that have to be met in order for a flag lot to be allowed. They can't have a shared driveway of thirty feet for four houses that behind. There are some in our neighboring communities, I won't point them out, but there are some where a driveway is shared between four houses. This wouldn't allow that to happen. They have to have their own flag pole approach and width to allow for the flag lot.
Where, where do you see this taking place?
Mostly in areas where they, say someone has in the A-one zone, and they have two or three acres, but it's not enough to put a road in. It doesn't make sense to put a road in because roads are too costly. But if they were able to subdivide it and make flag lots work, they could subdivide into three lots and allow housing behind their existing home. That's an example of where I would anticipate this happening if it's adopted.
And by us adopting it, then we're not gonna get the state telling us what they're gonna do, and we have to do. We've already beaten to the punch. I don't know about that. Well, yeah, they can do a lot of things, but at least we are out front on this. I agree with that. Situation.
We anticipate the state making a lot of changes in the future to our housing. Some of the things that are being talked about, not related to this ordinance, are starter homes, and additional accessory dwelling units that are external, not attached. We currently allow them attached. They're, it will be coming down the pipeline.
I know it, you, I believe the President of the Senate, Speaker of the House were pretty adamant that this was gonna happen, one way or the other, saying kind of a long nose, and applied a ways they could.
So I can't read that from here.
Sure.
What is it specifically, what protects the city from flag lots? You know, like you're just, so we don't want a woolly-nilly. What, what protects it?
Sure. If you'd like to go through, I'm happy to review it. So the, there has to be no other viable subdivision option. So to, to Councilmember Christensen's point, a subdivision means there's a road fronting a lot, right? So there has to be a circumstance where that can't happen. So for example, in an A-one zone where they have limited frontage on the front of the lot, but they go deep by two or three acres, this would allow them to, to utilize the flag lots. They, they have to have enough adjacent property to achieve the development area and eliminate the need for a flag lot if they are allowing for conventional lots. So if it can happen, they have to put a regular lot in that meets our frontage requirements. So the, the best circumstances that I can think of where this will be utilized will likely be the A-one zone. I can't picture this happening. There are a few areas scattered around the city where there are some existing flag lots that haven't been developed on, into properties, residential properties, because they didn't meet our code, so they were not a buildable lot. So that would So that would allow that to happen for those existing circumstances as well. But there's likely more development opportunities in the A1 zone for this.
So let's say it's A1, and they have three acres. Including, they've got to have an acre, so they've got two acres left. They still have to have acre lots, correct?
Correct.
They don't have to have a hundred-foot frontage?
Correct. They wouldn't have to. But if they could make it happen, they have to do that first.
Okay. So if they have, like, a road in?
You know, I get that we're streamlining this whole process, and I understand that. Some of the concerns I have, those when I was reading through this, if there is the changing of zoning ordinances, I realize that hasn't been touched. I'm really concerned. That's one of the things that are going to come down the pipeline and force the issue where we've got, you know, we've got, you know, the zoning now in our subdivision, and then all of a sudden, does that allow now, you know, all the local subdivisions, like we're putting in here, condos or things like that? You know, I'm really concerned that that's going to get tweaked, and we can't control that. Then all of a sudden, the city has no control. It's been taken away by state. I'm, I'm just, I'm really edgy on this whole thing. I understand what's going on, but, you know, it's like you're beating me Castro. Come on, I don't like it. Sorry.
So one of the other options that we talked about in our committee was identifying widths and lengths and making it more specific. Should you choose to not include this, we could go back to the drawing table to a certain extent and come up with more strict regulations for it. At the end of the day, they're looking for ways for us to, certainly this is property owner-driven. If a property owner wants to own five acres of land, they can own five acres of land. But if they don't want to have five acres and they want to subdivide that off, then this would give them a viable option to do that, the flag lots. So we can make it more strict, is I guess what I'm saying. If you want to remove it, we can come back with something proposed and amend it, or we can remove it altogether. We'll, we'll do whatever you adopt. But staff is recommending this as an option to meet the moderate income housing.
Can we come back and address it with more strict? Or if we adopt it tonight, it's adopted?
Well, it'll be adopted as written, or we can make changes. Or my recommendation would be remove it, and then we will work on it and bring it back to you if you want to put, because we, we had widths, we had depths. But this kind of gave more control. It's general enough, it gave control to staff to say, okay, if you can make a subdivision happen, we want that to happen first. Or a traditional lot with roads, we would like that to happen first. So this gave us a little, we felt like more control, but we can certainly put those standards in there if you want them.
And if the staff have the control, even that?
Will the staff have the control plus have stricter over the barrel?
Once you write that down, though, then they don't have any leeway.
Yeah. So if we don't write it down, then is it piece by piece as it comes in?
Yes.
And they're questioning it?
Then each, each option is identified or looked at differently to see if there's any other viable option, a little bit like what we do with the mixed use. Those that have sat on mixed use, it would be a little bit like that in the sense that if there's other road connectivity, if there's stub roads available, if there's any other way for us to do it, we're going to require that first. But if we do put standards in there and they meet them, we can't say no.
I'm trying to say the state's there. I'm concerned the way this control.
That's right.
This gives us a control. What, by putting it in and not, not restricting?
So can the state override us in a year or two and say, we don't care what you have down, this is what you're going to do?
Always.
Okay, that's, so if we say no, they're going to come in anyway?
Right. They could.
We don't know what they're going to do, right?
But this way we at least have some control right now.
And again, sorry.
Go ahead.
Don't make your decisions based on what the state may or may not do, because
Right.
Look, a body of that size, they do a 360 or a 180 or 270, right? But, yeah, I mean, in looking at this, I think, and the reason I brought this up, and I tend to be more direct than maybe I should, is this isn't just like an analysis of whether or not we like flag lots, right? This is a bigger picture of how are we going to do development for your grandkids, right? We hear all the time, everyone does, I do, telling blue in the face, housing prices are outrageous, right? This is terrible, my kids can't live here, my, my grandkids can't live here. You know, my brother's 22, thinking about getting married, and he just says, I will never buy a house here, right? He's going to move to Indiana to look for a job, or to look for a house. Okay, so we know this problem exists. And what cities, I think, need to think about is that the decisions you guys make on issues like this are not in a vacuum anymore. You have groups that are watching every city in this state on what you're doing with housing options. So it's not just, do we like flag lots? Well, I think they're ugly. Great. You can rely on that, but it's not like, this is not a decision made in a vacuum anymore. And the, they are tying more and more funding to your moderate income housing plan, right? So it's, it's a much bigger discussion than, than just flag lots, and that's the reason I brought it up.
We try to look good, but then we still have control. Push it. We say, yeah, well, look, we're playing the game, you know? Play the game, but then we have control still. And I don't want to see us put ourselves in a, in a box with restrictions. I'd rather have you guys do it piece by piece.
Well, we certainly try our best to do what's going to be best for the city and the law, and the residents that are going to live in these communities. They're, they're our priority when we're considering any of these types of developments. What's the long-term maintenance of the project going to be? What's, what are the residents that are left when the developer's long gone? What are these residents going to be left with? A community that's viable, that's going to be successful, that's our goal. But certainly meeting the moderate income housing report is always on my mind, constantly.
So we, we beat the flag lots to the ground now. Is there other issues here that we should be concerned about before we vote on this?
In this particular, yes. We have the section that I referenced earlier, whether you want to leave deferral agreements in there or if, so we've got them listed as the same section. So we're intending to leave one or the other. The deferral agreement is recorded with the county on the property. It's an agreement between the city and the property owner saying that if we ever come and put curb gutter and sidewalk, they will be responsible to pay for that to, to come through. The fee in lieu of is an option for us to collect a small portion of money that we would set aside for these improvements at the time that the city were to put them in. My recommendation, based on my experience with subdivisions, is the fee in lieu of, because at least the city's collecting something and not nothing. But again, we'll do whatever is adopted in the ordinance.
Was it like that, the planning commission recommended?
Yes, it is.
So if we're going to the fee, where does it go?
So the fee will be held kind of like in escrow.
Escrow, okay.
Like we did with the other projects that have paid for infrastructure. We'll hold it in escrow and then at the time.
Is this?
Which was, sorry.
Is this new development or is this existing?
This is new development.
Okay.
Anything that previously has been developed will be grandfathered in. If there's deferral agreements in place, which there are on some properties, those will remain. This would only be an option in the circumstance where there are no improvements and property was subdivided. There are very few locations, I know we went over this in planning commission, there are very few locations in the city that would qualify for this. 700 North, 750 West, North Harrisville. West Harrisville will be complete with our widening project, so it wouldn't be eligible anymore. So there's only a handful of areas in the city that would even be eligible for this section.
And that's if action development came in there.
If somebody wanted to subdivide. So certain criteria have to be met for this even to be in place.
What else?
Those are the main changes that we've included in. Again, there were some, there were some changes to the processing, because before we required a plat to be recorded within six months of the approval. We, we don't have that now. We allow them to do infrastructure and then record and set up their escrow when they're ready to sell the lots. The other section that was different was the online application section that we've included. I tried to put references in the staff report of where those changes are so that you could review them. And the main difference is what we've kind of touched on before, that the city council will no longer see you and approve subdivisions. They will go to planning commission at the plat review time, and then it'll be an administrative function of the land use authority to review the continuing cycles.
Remind me who sits on that committee?
So it's actually spelled out in the code of who sits on the committee. So it's an appointed board of the administrator and/or city planner, public works director, city engineer, and the planning commission chair, who's responsible for reviewing and approving applications.
Is there a reason we invented even a city council and city office?
Guess it was.
There is.
No longer asked.
I know that. And I'm asking that question honestly.
No, and it's a great question and one that has met a lot of differing opinions amongst city council members across this state. The short, simple, blunt answer that I deliver a lot is that the state and many legal minds do not want city council members making these decisions. It is one of the, and has been, one of, one of the most concerned areas of potential litigation for cities. And so the state has taken it upon themselves to say city council is going to be out of this process, because once it gets passed that initial plat, it is not a political decision. It's an administrative up or down whether or not you meet the code that you guys create. So that's why the state is taking that out.
And I understand that, but I can't understand why. You've got a planning commission person sitting there that's in that process.
They're un-elected. They're appointed.
They're appointed, okay. Yeah, fine. That answered my question, sir. We're elected.
Yeah. And really, like, I understand the question, and it's a good question. Can I just tell you, like, most city attorneys, and myself included, this is a huge sigh of relief for all of us. It takes out, and again, we talked about it. There are city councils that have, I mean, created lawsuits. There are county councils that have created lawsuits amongst developers, because a decision is not whether you meet the code. The decision is whether or not we like your subdivision. And that is not the appropriate mechanism for making that decision. So that's why this has come about.
They've taken away the law. I'm sorry.
That's a good question for us.
Any more discussion? Did we review everything that, so they need to make a decision on whether you want the fee or the?
Referral. I say we put it in as written and just take the fee and not the deferral.
Does that, that will need to be part of the motion? Okay, that's, you're, you're in agreement? Do you need any more discussion on that?
No, it's just.
I'm good with the fee.
Okay.
I still think.
Fee or, is that what we're doing?
Right.
Yeah.
You want, you want the fee?
What are we talking about?
The stack, the, the.
The fee or the deferral?
Thank you, that's, I can't say it, but I know what I'm trying to say.
Those are the words.
Okay. So you're good on that?
Yeah.
Good on fee in lieu of.
Okay. And then the other one would be the? Are you, need any more discussion on that?
You don't have to motion on that one, it's already included. Unless you want to remove it, then you would need to include that as part of your motion.
But now you understand why it's included. Okay. Any more discussion that we need to, any more questions, or? Anyone? Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt Harrisville ordinance 544, repeating and reenacting Title 12 Harrisville Code entitled subdivision regulations as written with the fee being accepted in lieu of?
Referral.
Referral.
Motion and second?
I'll second that.
Okay, add motion in a second. This is a roll call, so. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
I have to say it for you.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Christiansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Woloson?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous, thank you. Our decisions up here?
It is.
Item G, discussion possible action to adopt Harrisville ordinance 547, which is amending Harrisville City Code 8.06.010 entitled flood and hazard areas, and 10.05.050 entitled Article 5, provisions for flood hazard reduction. Jenny Knight?
Thank you. This is our last heavy one, and this is pretty, pretty cut and dry. Last month, we adopted a new flood prevention ordinance to meet FEMA's guidelines to make sure that our city residents are eligible for flood insurance. Unfortunately, the ordinance did not include a couple of sections regarding specific standards for residential construction, non-residential construction, enclosures, and manufactured homes and recreational vehicles. So this code just amends the code we just barely reenacted and adds the sections that we were missing. In discussions with the state, we kind of had, went back and forth because we don't have a, I want to use the right term, but yes, like a manufactured home park in our, in our boundaries. But there are circumstances where our code references manufactured homes to make sure that if someone were to be temporarily living in an RV, that would need to be included in this. So we've opted to just include it in our code to make sure that we're covered if there are circumstances where an RV or a manufactured home are within the city limits, that they still be eligible. So it identifies the base flood elevation and then the regulations for those type of things. There was also, the other amendment is due to needing the base flood elevation to be identified somewhere else in our current code outside of the flood prevention code. So we've opted to put it in with the flood and hazard areas that are in our construction code and standard section so that it can be referenced.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? We just did this last round, so it's just an improvement, I guess, on that.
So people that have to have flood insurance can get it, people that don't have to have it? That's what this is.
So the state is mandating that, not the state, the federal FEMA is mandating that we adopt these regulations to have our city compliant so that our residents who may need flood insurance are eligible for it. If we don't meet them.
Where they might not be.
Yes. If we don't meet our minimum, the minimum standards for FEMA, then they're, they won't qualify. So it's protection for residents here.
Can you explain the RV thing a little? I'm a little, what's, like, somebody buys a lot, while they're building their house, they stick their trailer on it to live on it. Is that what we're talking about?
Not necessarily, because we do have another code in our. Not necessarily, because we do have another code in our land use code that references RVs used as living quarters. It's not allowed unless they have a permit through the city to do so, so they have to apply for a permit. And it's a maximum of 14 days if they want to live in their RV or stay in their RV. And outside of that window, it has to be approved by the administration of the city to allow it. We have allowed it in the past, recently, because of the housing demands in certain circumstances where they're not connected to the sewer, they're using it for sleeping quarters for a temporary basis. And because we have that in our current land use code, we wanted to include the RV standards and the flood prevention, so that if something wild were to have happened and the moons aligned and there was a flood in that area, they would be eligible for that. That's why it's included. It does not allow people to live in their RVs on their lot.
Thank you.
But that's outlined in a different section of our code.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Ready to say? Are you ready for a motion?
Go ahead, sir. My motion to adopt Harrisville ordinance 547, amending Harrisville Code 8.06.010, entitled Flood and Hazard Areas, and 10.05.050, entitled Article V, Provisions for Flood Hazard Reduction.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I also need a roll call on this. Councilmember Loveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Wow, we got through a lot of hard things tonight. Thank you for your help and discussion. Moving on to item number six, which is public comments. This is for anyone in the audience that has something to address the council with. You're welcome to come to the podium, you have three minutes, and time is yours. All right. And no one is coming up, I'm going to close now. We're going on to item number seven, which is mayor council follow-up. First of all, I'm going to have here from our director of council, he's a lot needs for us.
Yes. Good evening, council. Thank you for getting through all those tonight. I've started with Jenny on the subdivision ordinance and the FEMA flood line ordinance over the last several months, and getting those up to date. And just a few points of clarification. Like on the flag lot, they still have to be fire code, so if it's an extended driveway, they'll have to do some things. And then also on the FEMA, the thing that comes to mind in RVs is Hurricane Katrina, and that happened, and they ran out of housing, so they essentially took all those RVs down there and had people that had to live on, live in them, and some of them still lived in a floodway. So that's kind of something to add. As far as public works, we are still moving forward on our building, and hopefully we'll see more progress on that come the first of the new year. Again, we're still working, getting everything ready for the delightful season that's ahead of us, that some people like, others, they think that's the point, but that's my personal Just again, thank you guys for allowing us to recognize our employees that do go above and beyond, you know, the drone pilot license people, the officers that do such an amazing job for our residents. We just want to say so much appreciation to them, and not only that, our other staff members that work tirelessly to make sure that the city keeps running every day as smoothly and as efficiently as possible. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Chief Wilson?
Just have one item, we'll keep it short tonight, but several months ago, Assistant Chief Moore was tasked to write a grant, the COPS grant. We were awarded that last week. That's $250,000 worth of... What it does is it will pay for part of two officers' salary for three years. We have five years to use that money, but it's $250,000 to start growing. As these subdivisions start coming in, we can be prepared for that when they come. So I want to congratulate Dennis on getting that grant as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to recognize your officer, Joyce, in late? Now?
That's all right.
Well, we missed you.
Thank you.
Administrator Knight?
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to give kudos to our staff that works tirelessly for our Fall Festival. It was just incredible to see the city staff work hand in hand to get that event going, and just an amazing event. We had probably historic numbers for that, and a lot of good feedback on that, so we are super proud of the way that our staff work together. And I don't think I have a lot this month. We do have our...
Do you have one for Christmas? I wasn't. Go ahead.
We do have our city Christmas party on December 7th at 7:00 PM, excuse me, 6:00 PM, 7 is a little late, 6:00 PM. We also have our Sam's at the Cabin event the next night on the 8th, and our Shop with a Hero on Saturday. We'll be putting up our giving tree after Thanksgiving this year, so we're looking forward to that. It's always a fun event. They're already playing Christmas music in the stores. And I think that's about it for our articles.
Thank you. On to council. Councilmember Wilson?
I do. We had a fun experience today, and we're saved by the city specifically, because we could get Mike to work, and it was unplugged in the back for some reason. Of course, we found the wireless, Mike chapped in the back. I understand, but came to the rescue. What I'd like to do is pass out, take a couple of these, these are our dates coming up, and in Christmas, yeah, we're going to do a little twist, we're going to do boy haystacks. And then we're going to probably celebrate that as a street orchestra Christmas. That's going to happen, so take a couple of those and invite people to come, that we have a wonderful experience, so.
Thank you for all you do for that. That's a big job.
It was a lot of fun. And for you officers, there's a little extra leftover food at the fridge for you and I too, so if you'd like to check and catch a toy, it's good.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss?
I just want to say thanks. I think the Fall Festival was a huge success. In fact, I got pegged by one city councilman from North Hogg, who dropped me and said, whoa, what a party. And, you know, everybody is just... I really hope we add, you know, with your blessings, everybody, I want to add another few minutes to the fireworks show, because that is an amazing thing, so let's look into it, if we just see what it'd run us to add maybe five minutes or so. But yeah, nothing but praise is for everybody, so. Thank you.
You're welcome. Go back to your...
Yeah, just one other thing, and that's to our police force. And our chief, our chief, tonight was so impressive, because he talks about all of you as officers, but to see you all in force here, not just supporting each other, but it gave me a full magnitude of what you're doing for the city. And so a big thank you very much. But to see all the officers in blue here, thanks, Mark, appreciate it very much. And yes, we want to support everything you're doing. And that's also all of your staff members, too, but it was just, hey, and you stuck around. Thank you.
For a minute, you look like they're going to sleep.
Councilmember Loveland?
Just to reiterate?
Yeah, sure.
Thanks to all of our officers and all of our staff, everybody. I only got one more of these to do, and I'm going to miss it, but thank you. And I really appreciate seeing the police officers up and down North Harrisville Road. I'm out there a lot, and I see them driving by, and I super duper appreciate that. I hope you're going by all the streets that much as you do down our road, so thank you for that. And also, to piggyback off Steve, the fireworks were fantastic, the whole Fall Festival. Kudos to Brian and the people who were involved with that. And let's add, yeah, I say go ahead, as many minutes as you want. Go for it, because I won't be here to argue about it. I think it'd be great to add some more minutes to it. And, yeah. Justin, there we go. Sorry, Justin. Thank you. I sent Justin a text, and hours later, it was taken care of, so anyway, thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Jackson?
I want to thank them all for doing something I never saw in 25 years, they're all here after a year, so thank you very much, you guys. Impressive work. And 1,000 hot dogs, 1,000-plus hot dogs, it's pretty impressive, so. The input was all positive. I think the cooler temperature make it nicer. I like you too, Justin.
Councilmember Wilson?
Not much else to be said, except for, again, thank you. You guys are awesome. Fun to see you driving down roads and waving and all that good stuff. Thanks for all you do, seriously. All of you, including you guys, too, so thanks.
All right. And I'm... Yeah? Confirm everything they've said. We have a wonderful staff in the police department and the admin department, works, public works. We just have a really good thing going on right now. I hope you guys appreciate it, and I can definitely think that a lot of it has to reflect on you and the hard decisions you've had to make the last few years, so. Thank you again. If there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.
Let me question.
Second.
I'll be.
All right.
Motion.